Good evening, everyone. Let me call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. Today is Monday, August 5th, 2024, and the time is 5:00 PM. We will start this meeting off, as we do all of our meetings, with a moment of silence, please. Madam President, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
(inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) Okay. Let me remind everyone of the rules of civility and decorum which govern this body. Officials shall be recognized by the chair and should not interrupt the speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations shall not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly, as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Also, anyone desiring to speak shall complete a comment card for each agenda item the person wishes to address, and it shall include that person's full name and address in a numbered agenda item. And if it is not completely filled out, the person will not be recognized. Okay, thank you. Ms. Johnson, are there any additions, leations, reorganization of the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We do have a proclamation. Okay, I'm gonna give the proclamation, and I'm gonna keep it. Mr. Hayden was supposed to be here to receive it, so I'm not sure where he is, but we... You'll accept it?
I can accept it.
Okay. Okay. So, in August 2004, California entrepreneurs John William Templeton and Frederick E. Jordan Sr. established a month of August as National Black Business Month to highlight the needs of black entrepreneurs and to drive the policy agenda affecting black businesses. The founders intended to highlight the issues and struggles associated with being black entrepreneurs, such as the lack of equitable access to capital and the inequitable awarding of government contracts. Black entrepreneurship has increased, and according to the Business Development Agency for the United States Department of Commerce, the United States has over 3.5 million black-owned businesses with a combined $183.3 billion in annual grocery receipts and over 1.2 million employees. Racial disparities in access to capital, government, and private contracting, and unemployment still exist in the city and elsewhere. So there is a need to raise awareness about supporting black businesses in the city. I recognize the rich diversity of residents in the city, the importance of having a strong and inclusive business sector, and the goal of increasing economic activity throughout the city. So I, Keith A. James, Mayor of the City of West Palm Beach, hereby proclaim August 2024 as Black Business Month. In West Palm Beach, Florida, I encourage individuals to get involved, and here to accept this proclamation is Assistant City Attorney Armando Fana.
Attorney. (applause) No, no, uh-uh, no.
Okay. Thank you. You wanna say a few words?
All right. Mayor Commissioner Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator. And so I did wanna say that I'm...I think I'm really proud of this commission and this administration for the strides that have been made in recognizing black-owned businesses. We've made tremendous strides with the programs we've had, the support we've done through the CRA, through Frank Hayden's office, and just in general encouraging businesses to flourish in our community. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all the commissioners for the support throughout the years.
Thank you.[304.68][304.68](applause) Okay, Commissioners, I do have a few appointments that I need confirmation from. Item 8.1. City Commission approval was requested for the mayor's reappointment of Marcia M. Badasi to the Education Advisory Committee for a term of two years to expire on August 2nd, 2026. Ms. Badasi has served over the maximum allowed number of terms, which is three, and is required that City Commission confirms her reappointment. I will entertain a motion. Oh, yeah, we do have a presentation. Okay. My bad. Thank you, Madam President, for keeping me on task. Let's go to item 7.1. Everything I just said, never mind, we'll get back to that. Presentation of the City of West Palm Beach Vulnerability Assessment Required by the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection Resilient Florida Grant. Ms. Redford.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Ms. Johnson, Penny Redford, Climate Change and Resilience Manager for the city. We are here today to give you a high-level overview of the vulnerability assessment that we've been conducting over the past couple of years. This is an assessment that is focused on flooding, so not wind, not heat, although those are very important. We're focused on flooding, as prescribed by the State of Florida and the grant that we have received to conduct this. You know, usually when I come up here, I say, "I'm delighted to be here, and I bring good news." Well, I am delighted to be here, and I don't really bring good or bad news, but I bring good data, and it's information that we need to use as we plan for resilience, especially for flooding now and in the future. We will be giving you, as I said, a high overview. Erin Deedy is a consultant on this project, and then when she is finished, I'll talk about next steps. So at this point, Erin.
Good evening, everybody. I'm happy to be here with you. My name is Erin Deedy. I'm an attorney and a planner in Delray Beach. I live in Lantana, Florida, so I'm a local consultant, not out of state, and with a great stake in the outcome of this work. I'm gonna talk to you briefly about the project objectives, the vulnerability assessment. I'll be showing some modeling output, and then Penny will cover some of the next steps. If there is any doubt, the sea level is increasing. We have rising sea levels, and that is one of the elements that this vulnerability assessment covers. The State of Florida requires us to include certain aspects of evaluation and data within the vulnerability assessment. I'll cover a little of that. And essentially what we do is we look at risk to your critical assets within the community. We rank and prioritize that risk, and then we have some recommendations to wind up. These are all of the different types of flood risk that we evaluate. It's 39 different modeling runs. Recently, within the last year to our project, we have added a 1-in-1,000-year rain event, and if you are in the Big Bend area of Florida, you absolutely know what a 1-in-1,000-year rainfall event looks like because you've received that in the last 24 hours with this hurricane. We model sea level rise, we model high-tide flooding, storm surge, again, something that people in the State of Florida are very cognizant of, rainfall-induced flooding, and then we model scenarios that combine those elements. We have seen those types of events. We get a king tide in October, and we get a 100-year rainfall event, and we see that flooding within our community. So we model these 39 different scenarios to see what the impacts are. We are required to look at four different types of assets. The transportation, critical infrastructure, which is all of your utilities, stormwater, water, wastewater. We look at critical community and emergency facilities. These may be assets that you don't own and do not have an obligation to maintain, but your community relies upon them. So for instance, a hospital, you wanna make sure that the roads are passable to hospitals, your fire stations, that type of thing. There's an interconnectedness with these assets. And then finally, we are required to look at natural, cultural, historical resources, shorelines, conservation lands, parks, historic sites, that type of asset information. So I'm gonna step through a couple of maps. The days of tidal flooding will give us certain sea level rise scenarios by 2040, 2070, 2100. The elevations of flooding inundation are there, listed on the slide. And so what you see are along the waterfront there, in the northern end, just south of the bridge, in the southern half, kinda keep looking at those areas. The red that is increasing is over 150 days of tidal flooding. Now, I should note that these models strictly look at the elevation of the water and the elevation of the land. They don't account for the fact that you have a seawall there. They don't account for the fact that you're gonna be doing some improvements to that seawall, and they don't account for the fact that you've got stormwater infrastructure that helps maintain and manage some of that tidal flooding as well. This is just a base model that looks at elevation of water and land. The next one I'm gonna step through is the rainfall scenario, and we have to modify the rainfall with future sea level rise. So you look at...we look at present day first, which is just a 100-year rainfall event. You can see the darker shades are the higher levels of flooding inundation, and then we kind of move that coloration to purple so you can start to see the tidal impacts that pop up along the waterfront, and you have these two kind of scenarios collide where you have less drainage capacity from the land to the waterfront areas and to that stormwater system because the tidal water comes up through those tidal structures. That's when you see your sunny day flooding, and people wonder why there's water on the streets when it's been sunny for several days. That's what sea level rise is gonna do to those effects and exacerbate rainfall drainage capacity. This is storm surge, something that we have seen over on the west coast of Florida all weekend. The red coloration that you start to see pop up are the higher levels of storm surge, but the thing with storm surge, it comes and it goes, it does not stay, the way we're gonna see sea level rise as a continued, permanent effect. And then again, you see the storm surge by 2100 with sea level rise, that's almost 140 inches of inundation combined between those two effects. The last map series is sea level rise plus storm surge plus a rainfall event plus a high tide. Lots of different conditions that come together, and as you see, the purples and the reds start to show up, that's...those are the areas of the city that are gonna be impacted the most. And so this analysis that I just provided to you is called an exposure analysis. This strictly looks at where the water's gonna go under these different tidal flooding conditions. The next thing that we are supposed to do in this vulnerability assessment is identify what we call flooding hotspots. These are the high-priority areas that are of a concern, and two things make a hotspot. One, there is some level of flood risk, and two, you have an aggregation of assets. It's not that this is the only place you have assets, it's just that you've got more in these areas than other areas of the city. It's a good thing not to be in a hotspot, but if your infrastructure is located in a hotspot, you know that's gonna be a high-priority area to do some adaptation work. What we have gotten feedback from city staff is that we are gonna add a 10th hotspot, and that is gonna be the entire waterfront, and we are waiting to see how far inland that will go. It will surely encompass the seawall, and that is good from a positioning standpoint in terms of future grant applications, and I'm gonna talk about that also in this presentation. We then rank the assets, 1 through 5, 1 being the highest priority and 5 being the lowest priority. With those 1 and 2 priorities, that's when you're gonna see impacts to those assets the soonest, and that's when you have the highest percentage of them. The map that's up there in the right corner essentially puts a color-coded circle over the asset and tells you what priority that is. And so we have a scoring system, we rank it. This is pretty tedious, but this is what the State of Florida wants us to do, literally on an asset-by-asset basis. So there's gonna be very good data for your staff to make decisions in terms of prioritization of capital projects. I wanna shift a little bit. This is good news, Penny. This is the money that the city has received from the State of Florida for the Resilient Florida program. We've been active since the inception of the program in 2021, 2022, and that has amounted to $8.2 million of funding to the City of West Palm Beach. Combine that with a local match, that's over $16 million of investment between city and state dollars that this city is making in projects like drainage improvements, lift stations, underground utilities hardening, the seawall pilot elevation project. Title valves are really, really important for those conditions that I talked about with the rainfall and making sure that that tide water is not flowing up your stormwater outfall structure. So this is really good news to the city. You've been an active participant, and that money has come. On the other side of the equation, that level of funding is not gonna continue. In the first two years of the program, we had approximately $500 million that came to the 67 counties and over 400 municipalities in the State of Florida, and that money has diminished each year. A lot of that was also bolstered with COVID relief money. The state started the program, put a lot of resources into it, launched with a bang, but now what we're starting to see is what is the state's commitment to this program gonna be? This program requires no less than $100 million a year, but when you have 67 counties and over 400 municipalities competing for that money, we've gone from awarding approximately 80 or so projects a year this past year, they only awarded 27. So the competition is increasing for lessened dollars, and more and more local governments are getting further along in their project development process. They're having their projects ready to go, designed, permitted, fully ready to be implemented should they get awarded that funding. So that is very important for the city to recognize that we need to be ready, and we need to get our projects as ready as we can to score better in this grant program. We do know that with the restructuring of the gaming compact, there will be more money...the Seminole Gaming Compact, there will be more money coming to the program, but it is unclear right now beyond state appropriations of $125 million what that's gonna mean. We assume it's about $200 million. But the news is that this program is not gonna be the end-all, be-all. So searching for other grant programs, searching for other sources of funding for your adaptation and infrastructure projects is gonna be really important. This is the timeline of the project. We are wrapping up. This grant, good news, was 100% funded by the State of Florida, and we are gonna finish up our report by the end of August and get our deliverables off to the state to get our grant closed out. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Penny, who has some next recommendations and action steps for you.
Thank you, Erin. Well, you know, usually I also do not come to you without an ask, and so you will be getting some asks from us. However, right now, we're looking to develop some plans and talk about what our next strategy and the next step is. So we will be submitting a grant to the State of Florida for an adaptation plan. So the vulnerability assessment told us where our infrastructure priorities were and where the flood risk was. We're going to take that information, and now the adaptation plan will take those prioritized projects and flesh them out, like Erin was saying. We need to have conceptual design plans, permitting, and estimated costs. From there, we can then go for implementation grants that would either be, again, through the State of Florida, Resilient Florida Grants, or could be FEMA grants, it could be any number, but we would have the project at such a point that we'd be able to move forward with it. We...so that will be submitted this year. Then we currently are working on and are just getting ready to kick off a resilient waterfront adaptation plan. So this is the same kind of adaptation plan that I'm talking about citywide, but we did one specifically just along the waterfront. We already received the grant for that. You'll be actually accepting it at the next commission meeting, and so we will have that ready to go. When that is done, we'll have projects that we can put in for construction grants. The other reason that we are...that the timing is really good is that we are currently undergoing a stormwater master plan update and also a watershed management update. So these two plans are even more granular and will provide us with even more concrete information to work with for our adaptation plan. So those are in the works now. So next steps. When I said that I was going to have an ask, well, of course, there is an ask, and that is for you to...for the city to utilize this vulnerability data, and then as we develop more with the adaptation plan, to develop projects and to move forward. So we need to make sure that all of the projects that we are moving forward, and honestly, it needs to be both public and private, are taking these flood risks into consideration. And of course, we have been very successful with grant applications. However, as we just heard, the money isn't going to be there forever. So we need to look at not just waiting for grant applications or grant dollars to come in, we have to look at our highest priority projects, get them on the CIP list, and fund them. So that is my ask for you, and we will be coming back later with recommendations for comprehensive plan adjustments and other possibly ordinances or policies. And I also do wanna mention that at the conclusion, when we are finalized with the vulnerability assessment, we will put it on our website, and it will be available for all to utilize. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation, and I think it's...I think it's important for the public to understand how much thought we're putting into this at this point in time, and I applaud you, Penny, for leading us in this effort because this is not gonna go away. We can't stick our head under the sand and pretend that climate change, sea level rise is not a real issue, and I'm glad we are identifying where our city is vulnerable to these inevitable meteorological occurrences. So, you know, we'll have to continue to abide by the data, and I hope as we get these plans in hand, we can come up with a list, a prioritized list, of specific projects. We may not be able to get them all done, and I know you're gonna add those to the CIP, but we have to at least start identifying those projects and teeing them up for funding and eventual implementation. So thank you for guiding us along this path. There's tons of work to be done, but we have to start right away. So thank you. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much, Penny. I appreciate this presentation, and I think it's...there's nothing more important, I think, for us to be focused on, these things that are gonna be happening long after we're all gone, but that we need to start planning for them now. I just wanted to ask you a little bit more detail about one of the things you just mentioned that was something about taking into account in our planning for our projects as well as development projects that are coming to the city, the things that we approve. You mentioned something about including in those projects, I guess, the necessity of planning for different things. I remember a couple years ago, we started having buildings building at higher elevations on Flagler Drive, but I'm curious if there's something specific you are asking for about, you know, that we would be including in these future development projects? Is there something specific you're talking about or just general to keep it in mind? Because, you know, I'm not an engineer, and so if there's something you...if there's a list of things that you think we need to be looking at when we're approving future projects, I would just be curious to know what they are, if you know them now, or if you could just share them with us at some point.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Really, what I'm trying to say is that we are building infrastructure today that is going to last through 2040 and some into 2070. So when we look at the maps, and I know, you know, for the sake of time, we went through those really quickly, but you can't just look at where we are today. We have to think that, you know, that road, that those pipes, whatever it is that we're putting in, the buildings that we're building, we've gotta look at the lifetime of that project and where we anticipate, based on the science, the combination of different flooding aspects will be, so that we have to prepare for that. So that's really what I'm saying. When we move forward with a project, we need to look at how long is this building, this infrastructure component, going to last, and did we take into account where those flooding aspects are going to be during that time?
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I think that this is extremely eye-opening. This is definitely one of the most important things that we can prioritize as policymakers in our city, and I think that this adaptation plan, as well as the ones that you've talked about in the future, are going to be key for us to be making decisions, such as what you just discussed with building. I'm grateful to hear that we've, you know, received over $8 million in grant funding and that we've been able to match it, but I do wanna make sure that we continue to set aside funding for this. I'm extremely supportive of us looking forward and being ready so that when we start calculating what these projects are going to cost, that we have the money in our budget to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, I know there are always a lot of hands in the pot for the money, and this is really to help us stay focused on prioritizing the health and safety and resilience of our city.
And I think as we develop these plans, it gives us the ammunition now to go to the private sector and basically say, "This is inevitable, this is happening, this is what the city is doing, we need your help because you live here, you do business here." So this is...that helps us to make the business case for soliciting and getting new partners in this effort.
I agree, Mayor, and certainly it also helps set the expectation of what we are able to do and not able to do for our residents and visitors as well as businesses, so thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments? Okay, well, thank you very much. Can we get a copy of the vulnerability assessment sent to us? Because you're right, those maps were difficult to read.
I'm happy to provide this presentation and the...we're just putting all of the final touches on the assessment. We'll absolutely get it to all of you and have it on the website as well.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we will turn to appointments, and I need...several of them need confirmation from the City Commission. Item 8.1. City Commission approval was requested for the mayor's reappointment of Marcia Badasi to the Education Advisory Committee for a term of two years to expire on August 2nd, 2026. Ms. Badasi has served over the maximum allowed number of terms, which is three, and is required that the City Commission confirm her reappointment. Questions, discussions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of Ms. Badasi's reappointment in support. Her leadership and institutional knowledge are particularly relevant as the committee's size is being expanded.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing, and all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.2. City Commission approval was requested for the mayor's reappointment. Questions, discussions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of Ms. Badasi's reappointment in support. Her leadership is, and institutional knowledge are particularly relevant as the committee's size is being expanded.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.2, City Commission approval is requested for the mayor's reappointment of Rod A. Braun to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for a term of two years to expire on August 2, 2026. Mr. Braun has served over the maximum allowed number of terms, which is three, and it is required that the City Commission confirm his reappointment. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of support of Mr. Braun's reappointment. His expertise and dedication to the committee reflect the importance of his service.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.3, City Commission approval is requested for the mayor's appointment of Bernard Nieto to the Downtown Development Authority for a term of three years to expire on July 1, 2027. Mr. Nieto will fill the seat of Ms. Verissa Laldas. It is required that the City Commission confirm Mr. Nieto's appointment. I will entertain a motion, and there's no discussion.
What if there's no staff that committed a motion? Oh, make up one. Oh, cool. Okay. I'm, I move to support Mr. Nieto's reappointment.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we confirm Mr. Nieto's appointment. Any discussion? Yes. Commissioner Fox?
I was just going to say, thank you to Verissa Laldas for her work. She is a downtown resident, and so I appreciate everyone who takes the time to serve on our boards and appreciate her work. That's all.
Thank you. We did send her a letter expressing our thanks and appreciation for her service. Any other questions or comments on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Madam President, for being so flexible. Okay, we'll now turn to consent calendar, items 9.1 through 9.9. Do we have any cards on any of the consent items? Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments on any of the consent items? 9.1 through 9.9. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of the items of consent.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10.1, Resolution Number 161-24, approving a non-exclusive services and license agreement by and between the city of West Palm Beach and Ike Smart City LLC for the placement of wayfinding kiosks in the cities right-of-way. Mr. Fana?
Good evening again, Mayor. City Commissioners, for the record, Armando Fana sits in City Administrator. So about a year ago, we started to explore upgrading our existing wayfinding signs, and you'll see a picture of one there. And during that process, we began to engage with Ike Smart City, and they are by far the leaders in digital wayfinding technology in the United States. And the fact that they have a presence here, a significant presence in Florida, was helpful as well, because we were able to actually go on a site visit and view the, the actual digital signs. I was able to visit Coral Gables and do a hands-on experience with it. As I said on the screen, you'll see the picture of what we have now, which has been provided by the DDA, and they were recently updated, actually, and I think they work fine for, if you're trying to figure out exactly where you are. But as someone who has two young men under the age of 30, and those of you who have young folks under the age of 30, getting them to actually look at a static map and figure out where to go can be a challenge. So having a digital wayfinding sign in the downtown will not only be great for the navigation purposes, but you'll be able to get step-by-step instructions. When I tried the one in Coral Gables, as a pedestrian, I was trying to get from point A to point B, and it pointed me out to, I only had to walk there, but they had a trolley system, so it told me where to walk exactly to get the trolley and how often the trolley would come by. So it was very useful for those who are trying to get around. But in addition to that, it also provides announcements on different city events that may be occurring, or public announcements, public service announcements that the city may want to make. As an added kind of layer of security, there are cameras that are included in each kiosk, so if we ever had an incident that the police department wanted to investigate, they could go back and look at videos as well, which just provides an additional layer. And then finally, another benefit for the city is, as part of the kiosk, there is ads that are provided by the Ike Company, and those ads, in addition to the ads that we have for the city for events, those are commercial ads, and there is a revenue-sharing component that comes with that. So this comes at no cost to the city, and as a bonus, we get a fairly significant amount of revenue that comes from this as well. So it's providing a number of public benefits, and you'll hear about those in a minute. I mean, unfortunately, the representatives for Ike Smart City were not able to make it today due to the delays and cancellations of flights for the hurricanes. But here representing Ike Smart Cities is Harvey Oyer, who will go into a little more details about these kiosks and what they can provide to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Fana.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the commission. For the record, Harvey Oyer, on behalf of Ike, and Ike Smart City stands for Interactive Kiosk Experience. And I know all of you are generally familiar with this, so I won't spend a lot of time on it, but I think it's important to put in the public record and for the members of the audience and those at home so they understand what this is. And as Armando correctly pointed out, we would be graduating from static, one-dimensional wayfinding that costs you money to very interactive that makes you money. So it helps our community in a number of respects. So this shows some of the cities that they're live in. If you would like to view them and use them, as Armando has, they are live in Coral Gables, Miami, Miami Beach, and Aventura, as well as Tampa. In fact, Miami contracted for 150 of them, and 100 of them are installed. They are the only provider of interactive kiosks that can tolerate our weather. They are rated to 165 mile-an-hour winds, as well as extreme heat, which is why you see them in Phoenix, as well as South Florida. So they're well-adapted and constructed for our environment. It is also fully integrated soup-to-nuts. City has to do nothing. Ike manages the software engineering, the design, the fabrication, the permitting, the construction installation, the ongoing operations. They sell the advertising, they manage the content, they market it, they put our local artists, our local businesses, and then hand the city a check at the end of that. So no additional work required by the city. Now, there are two different modes. One is a passive mode, which is where the advertising that pays for this comes in, and there are eight different pages that rotate, one of which is devoted entirely to you, the city, and you control the content on that. So it can be boat show, Sunfest, you know, meeting at the city hall, whatever you would like it to be, neighborhood events in your district. The other seven pages, if sold, are advertisers, and there are advertising restrictions, so there's no tobacco, marijuana, any profanity, nudity, inappropriate content. You control the content. So if there's anything that you don't want on those other pages, those will be honored. And any pages that are not sold are also given back to the city. So you will have a minimum of one of the eight pages, but possibly more. Then when someone, a user approaches the kiosk and begins pressing buttons, it leaves the passive mode and goes into an engaged mode, and it brings up an interactive suite of applications that is really everything that you can think of. I'd like to get to the Kravis Center. What are their hours? How do I get there? What shows are playing? I would like to eat food. It will bring up by proximity to where you are standing at that particular station, and it will bring up all food types. So if you'd like a Mexican restaurant, it'll find the Mexican restaurant closest to you, their menu, how you get there. That restaurant may not pay for elevated position like it would on Yelp or Google, which benefits the local businesses because they're going to pop up, don't have to pay to rise to the top of it. So I won't read these to you, but anything that you want to find or utilize in our city is here. And by the way, this is an aggregation of apps that are already out there, so Ike consolidates and aggregates other applications that are available to the public. So I won't walk you through this, but this illustrates what I just described, for example, finding a local restaurant. It'll tell you the hours, the price range, and if you would like to utilize the wayfinding feature, it will not only tell you how to get there, it will tell you how to get there through multiple modes of transportation. So for example, if getting from point A to point C requires you traveling through point B, it will tell you how to do that through multiple modes of transportation. It'll give you the Bright Line schedule, when the train leaves, how much it costs, same thing for Tri-Rail, if you need to take a bike share, an Uber, a Palm Tran, any source of transportation to get you to your ultimate destination, it can provide that to you, as Armando referred. I alluded to this earlier. One of those screens is always going to be city content that you control. Of course, we will work with you at no cost to you on the graphics, and so that can be rotating on a regular basis. You can also, if you look at the third column, if you have a question you want to pose to the public, which you frequently do, how do you feel about a particular issue, it, you can collect data from this location. There's also city-branded selfies, so people can take a photograph of themselves when they're on vacation or out with family and friends, with whatever background you would like, the city, the downtown, your neighborhood, Old Northwood, wherever these are located. So that's a fun feature. Public safety, Armando mentioned this. There is an emergency call button that goes directly to your 911 dispatcher. There are cameras, three cameras on this. You do not have to utilize those, that's completely at your option, but if you exercise that option, there's no cost to the city. All the other Florida cities have done it. There are some cities on the west coast of the U.S. that have privacy concerns, but this makes the people on the sidewalk feel safer. It works 24 hours a day. It also helps your police department in the event that something occurs. They have direct access because you own the right to the content to pull up if there was a police incident near one of these machines. So a lot of safety features, and then the fun features, is they devote one of the pages to local artists, and they not only advertise and show their art for free, they actually pay our local artists. So they will work with our local art scene, find artists, display their content, and pay them, which makes for a beautiful experience walking down the sidewalk to see artwork as well as advertising. Speaking of advertising, their business model, which Armando touched on, is expected to generate revenue of an average of $615,000 a year to the city over the 15-year lifespan of the contract, just over $9 million to the city, in addition to providing all of this content and wayfinding at no cost to the public. On the right, you'll see some of their typical advertisers. These are all best-in-class advertisers. Again, you can restrict the content if there is some advertising content that you do not desire. In terms of location, the contract calls for up to 20. It can be as many or as few as you want. I imagine we have more than 20 good locations in the city. These are general locations, not exact. We would have to work with Public Works, make sure that it's not going on top of a utility and a site visibility angle for traffic in front of a merchant's sign, you know, on outdoor seating area for a restaurant. This is meant to complement and help our local businesses not interfere with their business operations, so they will drill into the details in concert with your staff as to exactly where they are located. You can move these locations if you would like them in different locations. This is solely within your discretion. We do need a certain amount of pedestrian traffic in order to make these worthwhile, but there's a lot of flexibility as to where you place them. So with that, I will end the brief presentation, but I'd be delighted to attempt to answer your questions. Again, the person who really knows what they were talking about was flying through Atlanta this morning, and the hurricane canceled all of the Delta flights through Atlanta, so we apologize for that.
You did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Mr. Oyer, faking it. Okay, a few questions. We'll start with President Ward.
Thank you. Something I was just thinking of, obviously you have to update these as businesses go in and out, and so is there going to be kind of a contact liaison with the company specifically, not with the city, so that people aren't contacting, hey, City of West Palm Beach, you didn't put my business on here, that they'll be able to directly connect with if it's a new, a business that they didn't catch up with right away?
Yes, ma'am. In fact, her name is on the bottom of the screen. It is Marissa. She is the full-time contact. Incidentally, these machines are checked five days a week physically for anything that's broken, any damage graffiti, and they are monitored 24/7 electronically. So if some portion of it goes down, gets damaged, so this is not operated remotely from somewhere else, you will have an on-the-ground person, both for physical maintenance and to keep up with the city's desired content, restaurants that are changing, et cetera.
Thank you. Another, okay.
Follow-up?
Yes. Just on the locations, I know you mentioned that it's up to 20 and that we can decide. I guess this may be for Assistant City Administrator Armando Fana. What's the process that we're going to be working through on figuring out those locations? Because I noticed on that map, I'm always, always trying to push the north end and things that are going on there, but I'm also noticing Latin Quarter's not covered, the Antique Row isn't covered, and I feel like those are more, we're pulling in pedestrian access to those areas as well.
Right. I think initially, we're going to be looking at the downtown for those, those 20 locations, making sure that we're, as Harvey said, making sure that we're not interfering with utilities, sightlines, and things like that. And then as we get it kicked off, as we get it rolling, then we'll be looking at additional locations potentially. Some of it, as I say, has to be with foot traffic. This is not, this is not meant for vehicular traffic, so where there is extensive foot traffic, would make sense to put these, but the start is going to be downtown, but that's where the majority of the foot traffic is.
Sorry, one more follow-up.
Yes.
But those locations that you have on that, that's not finalized?
That is not finalized. Those are, those are general locations that they've identified, but yes, those could be changed based on, for example, what you said. Maybe there's, maybe there's a better location that has more traffic, we could, we could do that, or one of the general locations they've identified there is just not appropriate.
And are we going to have any follow-up discussion about that before they put, they're putting?
Yeah, we can provide you an update. As we get further along, those would be submitted almost as a right-of-way application, which is similar to what we did with the bike stations, and we'll go through them one by one, and once they're all kind of approved, we can come back and show, show you exactly what those are.
Thank you.
Commissioner Beduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. This is from Mr. Oyer. I'll try not to put you on the spot, something you can't answer, but I, I think that you probably would know the answer to this one. You had mentioned the three cameras, if we choose to utilize all three of those cameras, and you said that one of the cameras is, is with a push button that would go to our dispatcher, 911. And I think you said earlier to me that that would be always active, that camera, so all three cameras would always be active. But that's not really my question. My question is, what about audio? Is the audio, is the audio being captured only when that button's being pushed, or is the audio anywhere around that kiosk being captured all the time?
So I, I don't know with certainty, Commissioner, but I think the audio is only picked up when the emergency call button is pressed, and it connects them to dispatch.
Okay, and you'd be able to find that out for us, just to make sure that we don't have any privacy concerns. But I mean, you're out there on a public street, so I'm not so sure that there would be, but if it's capturing audio 24/7, I think that there could be an argument that, to be made that it could be a violation of, of...
I will confirm with an email back to you, but I, I think the audio only commences on the pressing of the emergency call button.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I'm very excited to see this presented to us. I was an advocate for the static wayfinding signs that we added a few years ago, so I'm excited to see that we are maturing as a city and, but that also leads me to my question, which is about visual clutter and light distractions. I just want to make sure that as we're placing these, that we're taking that into consideration as well, so that we're not distracting drivers or adding to any light pollution possibilities.
You want to address that? Yeah, as I mentioned previously, these will be reviewed similar to what we do with a right-of-way permit, which we have, we have a ton of them that we're looking at right now. So that line of sight, if there is any impact to tra, oncoming traffic, will definitely be things we'll be looking at. That gets looked at by about four different departments, so, including traffic engineering. So that, that will be the things that we'll be looking for.
Follow-up?
Yes.
And how will we be determining if this is a success and if there are other areas that we could expand this to, such as Commissioner Ward was discussing?
Well, I mean, part of it is we have the ability to capture feedback on these, so one of the things we could do is be added, and within the feedback loop to try to get, is this helpful to you? I would assume that, that Ike probably, part of the revenue generation with the, with the advertisements is going to be how many people are, are interacting with the machines themselves. So just the interaction, it's going to be capturing how many people are... So just the interaction, it's going to be capturing how many people are interacting with it.
I can confirm that, Commissioner. Each kiosk captures not only how often it's used, how long they interact with it, the time of the day. All of that data can be provided to you. Coral Gables, for example, started with five of these on Miracle Mile, and they were experiencing three times the national ICe average of usage. And so it caused advertisers to pay more, which led to more revenue to the city. In response, the city called ICe and said, we could use some more of these. So that is a constant measure bowling feedback loop to the city.
Excellent. Thank you.
Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Harvey. So the information, is it interactive? Would there be permissions that need to be granted when people access the kiosks? Or is it just purely for data inquiry and then giving information to the requister?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch all of that.
So when somebody goes on to use the kiosk, is there a permission that's needed? Is it interactive in any way where they're capturing information other than what they're keying in on the keyboard?
No, I don't. It's not taking your photograph or something that's an invasion of privacy, if that's the question. It will record anonymously how long you were on it, which app you were using, was it the restaurant, the how-to-get-to-the-beach, how-to-get-to-the-Norton? So they know which are the most popular app features, how long you stayed on it, did you do it at 2:00 in the morning or 2:00 in the afternoon? So that informs, you know, their future advertising.
Thank you. That is what I was asking. So you picked up on what my question was. So that information that's tracked when they are captured, when they do the request on the keypad?
Yes.
You did say that that information would be able to be shared. What's done with it? Do we have to request certain information?
Oh, do you have to request it? I assume you would, but we can, if you'd like it on a regular basis, we can provide it on a regular basis or on an as-requested basis. One of the items that we did discuss is wearing your CRA hat. You have a study underway on mobility, I think through FAU with a federal grant, and the data on usage, time of the day of usage, passersby, that can all be shared, for example, on your CRA project. It doesn't say who, it doesn't take a photograph of them, but it will help you as you try to figure out how you move people around our city in the future. So that's another beneficial data point for a project you already have underway as the CRA.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I also appreciate that you mentioned that you won't be putting it in front of cafes and things. I know that on Clemata Street, especially the prime seating outside, people want to be able to use as many tables as they can. But I think this is really exciting for the businesses to give an opportunity for more exposure. I think, can't tell you how many times I'm walking down the street and someone asks me, where's the closest coffee or whatever. So this is going to be, I think, a fantastic addition for the businesses. But I just want to make sure that when we start rolling these out, this is probably more for Armando or the DDA, but that someone is letting the businesses know where these will be stationed and the purpose of them, because I think it's really exciting for the businesses to have that kind of exposure, but I just want them to be included with the rollout.
Yes, ma'am. So you have our full commitment. That's one of Marissa's jobs, is to knock on every door and make sure that it is not blocking the window signage or outdoor seating. It's meant to help our local businesses, not interfere with our local businesses. We will also do that in conjunction with the DDA, who we've been working with, and their board unanimously endorsed this some months ago.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of Resolution Number 161-24 and the associated services and license agreement.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10.2, Resolution Number 153-24, approving a building improvement grant for Pathfinder's Eureka LLC through the Office of Economic Development in the amount of $100,000 to make improvements at 537 14th Street, West Palm Beach, Florida.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Robbie Sammy, Economic Development, here for this proposed business building improvement grant for subject property 537 14th Street. Quickly, today, I'll give you a quick refresher on the building improvement grant, what it entails. We'll go over the location of the property, talk to you a little bit about what the business is proposing as far as improvements, and as well as a little bit about the business itself, all the goals that'll be achieved through this project, as well as a time for Q and A at the end. So the building improvement grant, if you'll remember, is for any new or existing businesses that are looking to make significant or permanent improvements to their commercial properties. Those improvements have to be in line with the vision of the city and the goals of the city, along with some other requirements, such as the minimum capital investment of at least $1 million. There is a job creation requirement of at least five jobs created, and they must retain ownership of that property after the project is completed for at least five years as well. The grant is paid as a reimbursement, not to exceed 10% of the total project costs or up to $100,000 total, subject to funds. So 537 14th Street is in that yellow circle, and it's a little hard to tell, but it's bordered by 15th Street to the north and Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard to the south, Sappadilla Avenue to the west, and Dixie to the east. If we zoom in on that parcel, it's kind of what it looks like over here. It's a vacant lot, a hodgepodge of parking and tools and equipment at the current time. This is for Pathfinder's Eureka. It's the parent company to the business we better know as Scott Lewis Gardening and Trimming, which has been around since 1976. So pretty soon, they'll be hitting their 50th year anniversary in business, so we're happy to see that. They are a full-service landscaping company, taking commercial, public, and private contracts. They've actually done work for us at the city, too. Huge role for us at the Banyan Street Scape Project. They're taking on Tamarind now. So they do everything from garden design and construction to landscaping, maintenance, and pest control. One thing I didn't know, that I was happy to learn during their application review, is not only do they have over 40 employees, but over 70% of them actually reside in the city of West Palm Beach. So they hire super local, which is fantastic. And the retention rate is actually really high. A lot of their employees stay for 10 years or more and have been there for 10 years or more, so we hope that trend continues. What they're proposing as far as their improvements, so on that vacant lot that I showed you, they want to construct a mixed-use warehouse, about an 80/20 split, 8,500 square feet of warehouse space, 1,500 square feet of office space, 10,000 square feet total. According to their plans, the building will be Cat 5 Hurricane rated. And the reason they want to construct this mixed-use warehouse is it will allow them increased storage for bigger and better equipment. It'll allow them to hire more people and take on bigger and better projects and really just expand their operations overall. They do have a job creation plan, five jobs within two years after they complete the project, and their estimated total capital investment will be between $1 million and $1.2 million. If you're wondering what the project might look like, that's the vacant land on the bottom as it currently sits, and the proposed structure on top. This project does hit a number of economic strategic goals, namely 1.5 attracting and retaining talent in West Palm Beach, 2.1 helping us support existing businesses, and 2.4, 7.5 allowing those businesses to expand and remain in the city of West Palm Beach. As such, staff recommends approving Resolution 153-24. And with that, I'm open to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Any questions, comments? Commissioners, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I'm very supportive of this grant proposal. I just had a question. I didn't realize that that landscaping company had a parent company of Pathfinder's Eureka, as you mentioned. Are there other companies underneath this?
Pathfinder's is the owner of the property, and then Scott Lewis operates underneath that as the operator. So they'll be the tenant that will be leasing from Pathfinder's Eureka.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on this item? President Ward.
I'm also supportive of this. I just wanted to say I'm excited to see more progress continuing down that road, and I'm hoping that that kind of gray area can, now we can work on kind of infilling it a little bit more and working with the hospital to see more of that property developed. So with that, I will happily move approval of Resolution Number 153-24.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now go to the public hearing portion of our meeting, item 11.1, public hearing and first reading of ordinance Number 5105-24, amending the Code of Ordinances at Chapter 94, Article 13, signed regulations to designate wayfinding signage of kiosks as an unregulated sign.
Good evening again, Mayor Commissioners. Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator. So this is related to the previous item that I presented on the kiosks. Within the city, Chapter 94, Article 13 prohibits digital signage and has other prohibitions on other kind of signage as well. There are exclusions to those prohibitions that are located in Section 94402 of the code, depending on the type of signage. So for example, signs that have to do with public transportation, the kiosks and signage that we have for the bike sharing stations, those are all excluded types of signs. So this would just add to the exclusions, the informational kiosks that are approved by City Commission as an additional exclusion. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Very good. Any questions, comments, commissioners? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of ordinance Number 5105-24 and first reading, and schedule second reading for August 19, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5105-24, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida at Chapter 94, Article 13, signed regulations, Section 94-402A, to create Section 94-402A 23, providing for codification, providing for separability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will now turn to comments from the public. And we do have a few cards here. I'm going to read off three names. If you could start making your way toward the podium. Ryan Brown, Tawana Teal, and Brandon Bunky. Ryan Brown.
Thank you for having me. My name is Ryan Brown. I'm a resident of Northwood Hills. I'm here tonight to talk about trees and some of the city's lovely employees. Rewind, three years ago, our neighborhood developed and approved a street tree plan to get about 500 shade trees throughout our neighborhood on the public rights of ways and down all the streets. We've been working with Penny Redford and other city officials over the years to try to bring this plan into reality. Fast forward to last fall, the City, the Office of Sustainability had the opportunity to put 100 trees in the city's rights of ways, and we were lucky enough to be recipients of those trees. I wanted to come here tonight to express gratitude on behalf of the Neighborhood Association Board and the residents for those trees, and say that our appreciation will grow in time with the trees. Those trees were not just put in. It took a lot of work to do that, so I want to recognize the people that were involved in that, particularly Nicole Polio. She's no longer with the city, but she did a lot of the legwork for that project. Also, I wanted to mention, it was a resolution that was approved last month, Resolution Number 131-24. This gave our Neighborhood Association maintenance responsibility for those 100 trees that were planted, and I just wanted to bring up that that was a brainchild of Penny Redford. As far as I know, the first of its kind, and that gave us the power to take on that responsibility from our residences and use our combined Neighborhood Association funds in order to take on that responsibility. So it really, it made that a feasible thing, whereas if the neighbors were responsible for it, there would have been more opposition. So I just wanted to say how important that is to us, and we hope to expand upon that in the future. Lastly, I want to put a spotlight on Penny Redford. It's not often that I come here to recognize people, but it's not the first time I've come to recognize Penny Redford. You guys have a superstar amongst your midst, and I hope that you recognize that and utilize her to her fullest abilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Tawana Teal.
Hello, everyone. I am Tawana Teal. I am here on behalf of the Historic Northwest Residents in Action. We just want to say thank you very much for the great news from Mr. Leon Pender and also Mr. Kevin in the Engineering Department. We have finally got our stop signs near the sunset on 9th and 10th Street, and we want to thank Kristy Fox as well for always staying in the loop, and she's been a heavy advocate of sending out emails or anything that we need in connection to who we need to speak to. So we thank you guys, because we've been asking for it for a long time, for our babies in the neighborhood, and we finally got our stop signs that will be installed, hopefully before school starts on the 12th. We also want to just put out there the construction that's going on on Tamarind, just like we get the water information about when we need to boil our water, we need the information about if the construction messes up our street lighting. Street lighting in the Historic Northwest is very major. We need our lights, because it's dangerous at nighttime, and a lot of us go in our homes, you know, nighttime, and it's no lights. So we pushed really hard for a street lighting. We got it, and we need to keep it up. Even though they're doing construction, we need to be notified, hey, there's some construction going on, and we know the lighting is down, but FPL or Wyden and Turner, they're working on it to get it taken care of, because a week is too long without lighting in our neighborhood. So we just want to thank you guys, and we appreciate the Police Department for the bike unit in our neighborhood. They're doing a great job. Sergeant Patterson is there whenever we text, call, email, no matter what it is. They are tackling our neighborhood one street at a time, and we are coming together as residents. It might look like a few of us, but it is a few of us, but we're making major impacts by utilizing our resources in the city. So thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Brandon Bunky.
My name's Brandon Burke. I live at 345 Banyan Boulevard, and I want to bring your guys' attention to the negative impact that Myers on Clemata Street is having. It's a nightclub. It's really affecting the residents at the Anya Building. Their decimal reading last night was 110, and I think within the city, I think it has to be under 100. Their music goes till about 4:00 a.m. on the weekends, including Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And I'm the only one from the building, but we've called pretty much every night since they've been open. They have a back patio area they've converted into like a makeshift nightclub. So they were always a great nightclub before I even knew the owners, and they kept everything on the inside. Now they're in the back alleyway there. And I live on the sixth floor at the Anya Building, and last night, my daughter didn't get any sleep at all. She does summer camp, summer school, and it's just a major disturbance. There's a small child that lives below us. Their family actually knocked on our door and asked if we had the same, did we experience the same thing again? And I told them, yeah. So we have complained to the police pretty much every weekend. We asked our building, and they said to come here, put it on the record that this is an issue. So I would like it to be addressed or assessment be done, and just see if there's anything to be done. And then if there's anything that can be done, or if we can look at the noise ordinance that we have here in the city, just because we are getting more residents here, more buildings are going up, that's something I know I'd appreciate and we'd all appreciate. And one last thing I'd say is that I'm in favor of small businesses, nightclub, the nightlife. I'm just looking for a balance, a compromise. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We do have a noise ordinance in the city, and we will see that it is being properly enforced. Who's here? Mr. Jose Luis, can you just make a note and talk to that gentleman, get more... Mr. Jose Luis, can you just make a note and talk to that gentleman, get more information, and we'll raise that with code enforcement, please? Make sure they're following up on that. Thank you. Michael Cleveland?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners and Staff. Michael Cleveland, West Palm. Sometimes when we tour an area, we find and locate more than we're looking for. I understand and compliment you on approving those wayfinding signs, and I hope no business in the downtown area gets left off. I want to call your minds and think, if that's capable. Most recently, there has been a lot of the conversation, discussion about whistle blowing or horn blowing of the trains not going through certain crossings. I want to ask you if, for any reason, one of those crossings malfunctioned and a train comes through, no horn, no whistle, family gets killed. Who bears that responsibility? Is that on the city, or whoever approved that, or are they just the train people? Also, I've always questioned panhandle being all the way on the end of the corners of the intersection. I mean, they're doing anything, that's up to them, but I always thought they should be about 50 feet off the intersection, corner. Now, my next question is, if somebody comes across and kills one of those panhandas out on the corner, the city allows them to be out there? Does the city take that fault? Trees. I want to piggyback on the gentleman talking about trees. During a hurricane, it is not the hurricane itself that does the most damage. People think that it is the tornadoes within the hurricanes. And I was fortunate enough to visit Hurricane Andrew's damage down in South Miami, all the places down there, I worked down there. The most damage is done by trees, telegram posts, and intersection light posts hanging out. And I noticed that throughout the city, there's a lot of high trees, and when wind blows over, there's going to be a lot of, you know, trees closing the street and tearing up homes or whatever. But the insurance company never say anything about trees. They always talk about the roof and all that other stuff. I just, you know, throwing out a few questions to you guys. Also, I noticed that there are very few kids left in cars nowadays being suffocated by the heat. You never hear anything about on television or radio asking people to be careful for that. I don't know, things just bug me. I don't understand why, but all other things are more important than this city or anything else, just like maps. We don't use maps no more. We use Google. I bet you couldn't find across the street. Calculators in school, kids in grocery stores can't add or subtract. The Japanese said it's going to make them lazy, and they're doing it. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's the end of public comment. We'll now turn to comment from members of the dais, beginning with you, President Ward.
Thank you so much. I just have a few comments tonight. Our monthly Meet the Chief meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday, August 14, 6:30 p.m. at Gaines Park off Australian Avenue. Please attend if you have any concerns. If not, you can always reach out via email, but that is the place that you can come. The chief usually attends with a variety of his staff to discuss major issues within the community. We're also, the West Palm Beach Police Department is hosting their next National Nine Out event on August 6, on 18th and Tamarind Avenue. There'll be a school backpack giveaway, and they've invited a variety of social organizations. And then the next night in Northwood Village will be on September 20 from 6 to 9. I'll be reminding a couple of the next commission meetings that the last one was rained out, so I'm hoping we can get a big turnout. That's a celebration of creativity, entertainment, and style, and so please come and take the opportunity to shop down and tap to the beat while learning about the exciting CRE redevelopment projects in Northwood Village. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start by thanking the residents who came out tonight, especially to Tawana, the Historic Northwest Residents in Action. It's fantastic to have such advocacy in the neighborhood. I know it hasn't always been that way, and it takes really dedication and time from people in the neighborhoods to step up to the plate and try to make sure that the things that you want in your community are done and that you're speaking on behalf of your residents, and I know that we all want to have more of your neighbors to come to the table to help you, and we're working on it, but it is, I'm so grateful for all that you do and to take this on, to make sure that we are aware of the things that are going on in your community. She mentioned the lights being out last week. There was a resident in the neighborhood who called to let me know that there was an incident on Tamarind, that the power had been knocked out, and it was, just took several days to figure out who was the correct party involved, and I could go on all night about the issues that I'm having with the team that is working on Tamarind, but instead I just want to say a huge thank you to Armando Fana and Chris Ruge for really stepping up to the plate and making sure that that was taken care of and is as quickly as possible. You know, we're spending a lot of time and effort to make sure that we have the bike team patrolling Tamarind, and then to have the lights out for a week when you're going home at night and it's pitch black, and, you know, the police say that, you know, the number one deterrent to crime is to have good lighting, so it really takes a lot out of the neighborhood to have to go home day after day like that, so I appreciate all the work that went into helping get those lights on. I also wanted to say to the president who was here talking about the Meyer Patio, I've had several concerns from the neighbors that it's, the condo when he lives in is a couple blocks away, and I just feel like I have to just play a short part of the video because this is something that, at 1:40 last night, this is what the people were hearing that live two blocks away. I mean, it's, it's not something any of us want to have in our backyard, and I think obviously when you move downtown, I moved downtown because I like the busyness of having a lot of activity outside, but I think that there's got to be a happy medium where we have neighbors that, at 1:40 in the morning, their kids can't sleep because the noise down the street is not breaking any laws, it's not violating anything, but I feel like hearing how loud that is, maybe this is something that we need to reconsider. I have shared it with the DDA, and I know that they're looking at ways that they could add barriers of some kind, but I feel like it might be something we need to just look at the law a little bit differently and see if there's ways that we can improve things. I also wanted to mention on happy note that the Clear Lake Trail ribbon cutting will be happening on August 17, between 9 and noon, 9:00 a.m. and noon. There'll be snow cones, free giveaways. It'll be a lot of fun with, the police department will be there. Bright bikes will be available to cruise the trail, and it's been a long time coming. This was a partnership with the city, the TPA, and many others, so I'm happy to finally see that open and people enjoying it, and hopefully everyone can stop by again August 17 from 9 to noon, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Beduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the fund for their generous donation to cover the police academy tuition for some of our new hires. As everyone knows, it has become increasingly difficult to find and to hire qualified public safety personnel, particularly police officers at this point, so this donation should help us to attract high-quality individuals who are not yet certified by assisting them in getting through the academy and then spending, hopefully, a whole career here in the city of West Palm Beach, so thank you.
Commissioner Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to remind everyone that we are at the top of what could be a very active hurricane season that will last through November 30, and it's important that we are prepared, that you stay prepared, that you have all of your supplies on hand, that you have the tools that you'll need to get through any adverse weather conditions, and if you have the opportunity, instead of waiting until your tank is empty, try to fill up when you're at the halfway mark and keep your tanks closer to that full line on your vehicle, and just remember, if you stay ready, you won't have to get ready in the event that anything happens.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to commend our residents who speak up in the neighborhoods and in the community throughout the city. I got a call last week, early in the morning, from a resident who rides his bike up and down Flagler, and he had noticed on Suma Beach that there was a few piles of debris, looked like construction debris, and he thought, well, that's strange. Is that the city doing construction nearby? What's going on here? And thankfully, with the help of staff, we were able to find out that this was actually some illegal dumping that was going on there and able to get that cleaned up, and so I really thank everybody who keeps an eye out on our neighborhoods, because I know that our staff is working hard to look out for these things, but it takes all of us together to be able to keep our neighborhoods and our city clean. Another example, and just something that we're working with Palm Beach County Palm Tran on, is just that, I know we've heard some reports of this in the past, and I'm hearing it again, is just trash at some of our, growing at some of our bus stations and just, you know, I don't know what's going on with folks. Right after I received that, some of these complaints last week, I was driving behind someone on a moped, and they took open the wrapper of something and just threw it right off as they were driving by, and I, you know, I just, making sure that we do all that we can to help continue to keep our city beautiful and clean. And then finally, wanted to make sure everyone was aware. Thank you, Mayor, to your communications team who put out the news recently about WPB Key and noting that the Homeless Activity Reporter website, I know it was something that I used to share a lot with residents. It used to be a website that ended with H-A-R for Homeless Activity Reporter, but now it is integrated into WPB Key, which I think is great, so there's one place that you can go to to report all sorts of things, whether it's a light out, a pothole, a sidewalk that needs to be repaired, and now if you need to report any homeless activity, you can do this through WPB Key, which is an app that you can download from your mobile device. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few comments. One, I did want to share that on Saturday, we did have one of our West Palm Beach Fire Tenants deploy to help with the Hurricane Debbie efforts up north, and also learned that this morning we sent two ambulances with six personnel to North Florida to assist with evacuations and medical treatments. Certainly our thoughts and prayers are with them, but I also wanted to highlight that because, you know, there may be a time, hopefully not soon, when we need other departments to come assist us, so it's nice to know that our West Palm Beach Fire Department, they've done this all the time, but certainly want to highlight it now, is also helping other communities in their time of need. There was a reference made to Tuesday, tomorrow, being the annual National Night Out, so I won't repeat that. Also, a reference made to the ribbon cutting for Clear Lake Trail on Saturday, August 17 at 10. On Thursday, August 22, the city and the U.S. Small Business Administration are holding a Small Business Town Hall at Palm Beach Atlantic University in recognition of National Black Business Month, so encouraging all interested, don't miss the chance to connect, learn, and grow your business at this dynamic town hall gathering. You'll be hearing from government leaders and industry experts on resources available to best support your business and entrepreneurial aspirations. There will be a fireside chat, panel discussion, and Q&amp;A, and the event is free and open to the public. Lunch will be provided. Mark your calendars for Wednesday, August 21, for another enchanting evening of jazz featuring talented jazz ensemble Noreen Downey and Dizzy Blue Band. This is part of our Soul in the City series, which is an award-winning, and this award-winning jazz artist will dazzle with the sounds of premier and maybe even smooth jazz. The event takes place at the Lake Pavilion, 101 South Flagler, from 7 to 9 p.m. For more information and tickets, please visit wpwpb.org. Hurry, because this event, like the other ones, is likely to sell out. Also a reminder that kids are going back to school on Monday, August 12. Please be mindful of the school's safety zones and take extra caution as there will be more vehicles, buses, and kids on the road, and as was alluded to, this is, we're heading into what will be a more active period of our hurricane season, so certainly encouraging everyone to equip yourselves with essential supplies and emergency plan, as Commissioner Warren indicated. To help you prepare, the city does, has put together a special hurricane news program called Surviving the Season, and it can be found on the city's YouTube channel and on our website. Speaking of websites, I'm pleased to announce that the city will proudly unveil a new and improved website on Thursday, August 15. The new redesigned site will have faster navigation, a sleek, mobile, responsive design, improved search capabilities and functionality, and a whole new look, including video. So the redesigned site will transform the user experience, ensuring streamlined access to information with minimal effort. We can't wait for everyone to explore the new site. That's all I have. Thank you. God bless you. God bless the great city of West Palm Beach. Good night, everyone. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.